7, my name is Tom Sullivan. I am your state representative. I want to thank you all for coming today to watch us while we do this live, or we are going to be recording this. This will be on our Facebook page and other social media outlets that we are involved with. So if you're watching it at another date, we're putting it all here for you so you can see. I'm honored to be able to have a guest with us today. The Arapahoe County Clerk Joan Lopez is here with us. She's got a presentation that she's going to put on to speak about the past election, some of the things that she saw, kind of taking us through the system. She's got a slide presentation. And so that'll be, I'm interested to see it. Staff has already seen some of it. I'll be watching it for the first time with all of you. So if anybody has any questions about the slide presentation, go to the chat area in up at the top. It's either at the top or the bottom. I'm not sure which, what type of setup you have. It's up on the top of my iPad. But put your questions in there. I'll be monitoring it. When I see questions, I will wait until we get a pause. And if it's pertinent, I will ask Joan right away. Then we'll have some time at the end. Wanted to let you know that we, I'm sure you all were kind of following along. We opened up the 73rd General Assembly on Wednesday. We all got sworn in. That was something constitutionally by state statute that has to happen. So we had to, actually, everybody had to be there physically to get sworn in. And then what happened is then a lot of people had the opportunity then to leave. Those who have immune sickness or concerns, because it's still really not a safe place. And it's not a safe place for the workers, the staff that's down there that has to be there. And then with the problems that are happening in DC, I don't know if many of you saw our newsletter. We're going to post it again on our Facebook page in the next day or two. But there, we were getting safety briefings, several of them, about egress areas, what the protocols were going to be and that type of stuff. And so it's, they're taking it very seriously, our safety, the safety of the public. So it made it kind of different. Wednesday was kind of a lengthy time. There were some complaints. Their major complaint was about doing the business of the people remotely. We have to do that right now to keep everybody safe. Not only to keep, again, the legislators safe, but to keep the general public safe. And because of the holidays, this is kind of the peak time of when the problems, you know, could happen, when people could start showing the symptoms. That's why they stopped. So they're gonna, we then went three days, did some work, passed a couple of, you know, those types of bills to make it okay to do the remote legislation, answered a couple of other questions. There were some formalities that needed to be taken care of. And we got ourselves finished on Friday. And we will be back on the 16th of February. We will pick up from where we left off. So that means we've only used up three days of 120 days for session. So when we come back, we will have 117 days of session. We passed that legislation. And last year, we passed that legislation. They took it to the courts, to the State Supreme Court, and they ruled in favor that we could stop and start because of a national disaster like this. Even with that having happened, members of the Republican Party thought that it was unconstitutional. And after we had a vote to pause our, the General Assembly until February, they used a rule, I think it's 14, from our House rules and protested that vote. And all 24 members of the Republican Party signed on to that protest. They protested the fact that we are, took a pause and will come back on the 16th. Duly noted, it's in the journal. You can read it. You can see everybody that signed it. Three members who voted in favor of pausing the General Assembly just moments before the protest was, then were also on, had signed the protest letter. So that kind of is hard to understand how you could vote for it and then sign a protest letter against what you just did. Doesn't, doesn't make, doesn't make much sense to me. But that's kind of how things work. So we'll be back on the 16th. Offices are still open. At the end, when Joan's presentation is over and we're all finished and have, you know, thanked her profusely for giving us some time on a Saturday afternoon. Looks like it's pretty nice outside, little chilly, but be a nice day to take a walk or, you know, go out with your dogs or something, get some things taken care of. Appreciate her coming in when we send her on her way. If there's any questions, we'll be able to take those. And without much ado, let me welcome the Arapahoe County Clerk Joan Lopez. Hey Joan, thanks for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for the invite, Representative Sullivan. Awesome. I don't know how to take this off, but I think I'll be okay. That's fine. All right, well, okay, thanks for having me. I'm excited to speak to you all about the general election and how it was conducted in Arapahoe County. And just so you know, I will be using an acronym called VSPC. And that means Voting Service and Polling Center. And that is just a place where you can vote in person and pick up a ballot. So just so you know what VSPC means. So go to the next slide, Lindsay, please.
Oh, there we go. Is that the next?
Right, awesome. Yep, thank you. This year, we managed three elections total. The first I call the regular season, which was the presidential primary in March. Then we had the playoffs, which was the party primaries election in June, right before the main event, which I call the Super Bowl of elections, the general elections, which was November 3rd. General elections always generate more interest and participation than other elections and always come with their own unique tests and trials. Even so, this year's general election was the most closely watched and captured the public and media's attention, more than any election in recent history. And all of this, the fact that the entire election process was conducted in the middle of the worst pandemic to strike the United States since the Spanish Flu. And you all had agreed that we had our work cut out for us. Our Elections Division responded to these challenges with the three Cs. Communicating about the process to make things transparent and understandable for voters. Creating more access to safe voting options like drop boxes and opening more VSPCs to improve safety. And being creative, adopting options like curbside pickup to pick voters and to keep voters and staff as safe as possible whenever an in-person service was necessary. Next slide, please. Our outreach to voters, social media, print, online, and television news appearances and other channels was all directed at increasing engagement in offering meaningful information to make voters feel invested in the county's election process, as well as offer them useful information on voting safely. Next slide, please. Our catchphrase or tagline for the election was be safe, be confident, and be heard. We wanted to make sure voters and potential voters across the county knew that even during a pandemic, we employed every available option to keep them safe so they would exercise their right to vote. We also wanted to ensure voters that our election systems are secure, fair, and transparent. We wanted new voters and residents who hadn't been active voters to know that our process works. We wanted to give them every possible reason to register and cast a ballot. Lastly, we wanted everyone to know how they could be heard. We emphasize how easy it is in Arapahoe County to vote, how important it is to do so, and how we explain the steps they can take to be engaged voters. Next slide, please. The phrase be safe, be confident, be heard covered the three main themes included in our messaging. Let's start with be safe. We wanted voters to know to vote and stay healthy by minimizing and avoiding their exposure to others. One way our messages encouraged safe voting was by strongly recommending that voters use drop boxes or the mail to return their ballots. You can't get much socially distanced than putting your ballot in your own mailbox or dropping your ballot in a steel box outdoors. Next, we wanted voters to be confident in our process. As I'm sure you're all aware, there are and there were and still are a lot of headlines and rumors on social media about voter fraud, ballots not being counted, and other nonsense. Our strategy was to ensure voters that our election process is secure, bipartisan and transparent, by showing the public how it all works. We've emphasized that security, the security of drop boxes, published videos of election judges talking about their dedication to fairness and transparency, and explained the many checks and balances at each step of the process, such as always bipartisan teams to empty drop boxes, opening ballots, and verify signatures. And last, be heard. Of course, some voters always need to vote in person because they use accessible voting devices or translation services, or they need to register or get a replacement ballot at the last minute. And some people just prefer to vote in person. For those voters, we made sure to advertise that voter service and polling centers were open from October 19th through Election Day. Voters could vote early and minimize exposure to large numbers of people. We also advertised the safety precautions we put into place at all VSPCs across the county, like masks, sanitizer, social distancing, and sanitizing voting equipment after each use. Next slide, please. Oh, there it is. This is a video I mentioned featured some of the remarkable election judges explaining assured that their ballot is in good hands. Let's take a few minutes to check it out. There we go. Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Oops, sorry. Give me one second.
It's okay. It's all right.
I'd heard some rumors that votes might not have been counted. People didn't think that things were going to be fair. So I wanted to see how the process went.
And there's so much going on in the political arena. They don't think about the mechanics and the people behind the scenes that are actually making the election happen.
Every point of the voting process is managed by people who have been vetted, people who have high integrity. It's all bipartisan teams.
It's like they take every safeguard to make sure that those votes are counted correctly. They have signature verification. They don't take any of this lightly.
We wanted to be a safe and secure and a fair way of doing all of the election.
When you cast your vote, everything is monitored by video. You have signature verification. There are secured boxes that are taken to the chain of custody and delivered to the mailhouse facility.
When they do the signature verification, like there's actually people sitting there looking at your signature go by.
Everything is safe. Your information is not shared with the public or anyone else. Once you vote, it's sealed until the ballot, the ballot judges open it.
Each person who handles that vote is so interested in each voter being able to have a vote that's counted and counted properly.
We're working with people of different parties with a common goal of assisting people in casting their votes.
And that's why we're there. That's why I've been there for 17 years. That's why she's been there for 14 years.
Everything is thought out and thorough. Everybody that works there is generally working there because they want the election to go smoothly and work the way that it's supposed to work.
Be safe.
Be confident.
Be heard.
Love my judges. Next slide, please. All right, awesome. One of our, one of our communications goals was to give voters a behind-the-scenes look at the process, sharing all of the little details like bipartisanship and system checks and balances to help voters better understand the process and improve their faith in it. Some of the steps we took to reach our goal was pushing out the "life of the ballot" video, which explains the entire vote-by-mail process from start to finish. Other steps we took for transparency included welcoming poll watchers to observe the process at our elections facility and voter service and polling centers, giving virtual tours of the election facility on Facebook Live, and encouraging voters to track their ballot with BallotTrack. So Lindsay, if you just click that little link on top, and it'll show you the video. Thank you.
Ever wonder how your ballot gets to your mailbox and back out again for results? Election Day is a year-round process, with staff working behind the scenes to make sure your vote is counted and your voice is heard. And it all starts with ballot creation. Ballot content, such as a candidate race or a measure, is submitted by local jurisdictions. Ballots are printed and sent to a central mail facility for delivery to voter mailboxes. After you return your voted ballot by mail or at the drop box, election workers begin moving your ballot through a series of security checkpoints. Bipartisan teams pick up ballots and deliver them to a warehouse. Next, ballots make their way through a ballot envelope sorting machine. Ballot envelopes are scanned to verify signatures match. If there is any issues with the signature, they're set aside for further review. And correspondence is sent to the voter if needed. Once ballots have passed review, bipartisan teams open the ballot envelopes. Each ballot is removed and laid flat. Next, ballots go to tabulation. Ballots are scanned, and these images are stored on a secure, closed network. Bipartisan teams look over any markings that the machine couldn't determine. These teams are trained on how to determine voter intent, and they make every effort to ensure your voice is heard. Initial results are published at 7:00 PM on election night. Our office updates the results until all ballots have been verified and counted.
We know security is an increasing concern for voters, which is why we think it's important that everyone gets an inside look into ballot processing. Our democracy works best when everyone has a voice. And our team is dedicated to making sure your vote counts. Happy voting, Arapahoe County.
Awesome. So you'll have to close out YouTube, Lindsay. And then that'll take you back to the PowerPoint. All right, awesome. Do you have an, do you have to open it up or is that where it is? Okay. Um, okay. So it's on the, so you have to go to the next slide.
Okay. Sorry, I've got a speech call of death here. Okay, here we go.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Establishing the clerk and recorder's office at the arapahoevotes.com website as a trusted source of information was another component of be confident theme. We pushed out accurate and verifiable information on social media, as well as fact sheets and presentations to community groups, all connected back to Arapahoe Votes brand and website. The message was received, and we even got a shout-out from the Secretary of State for our work to refute the rumors and misinformation about spreading, that had been spread while providing reliable, accurate information to voters. Be heard, as I mentioned previously, meant getting voters excited about exercising their right to vote and laying out the steps they could take to do so. We used all of our channels to inform county residents about important dates and deadlines, provided tips to register, vote, and track your ballot, and explained how to become more involved in the process as informed voters and even as election judges and poll watchers. Next slide, please. Another important component of our strategy for this election has been to connect with municipal partners across the county. We sent weekly emails containing graphics, elections information, and other social media content to clerks and communications teams in our, in every city, town, and village in Arapahoe County, in addition to Arapahoe Libraries, Arapahoe Community College, and other partners. These partners were, have responded by sharing their message, reaching residents who may pay more attention to their local government channels than the county. Residents were directed to the county's resources, such as website, our website, our phone line, as well as our social media accounts, where they could receive reliable and important information on the election process. We also worked out a limited partnership with the Denver Broncos. The organization was very involved with their "get out the vote" efforts for this election. The players that lived in Arapahoe County and encouraged voters to cast a ballot were Deonte Harris, Elijah Wilkins, and Von Miller. Next slide, please. Considering the high level of interest in the election and the worsening pandemic, election officials all across the county had to be creative and act fast this year to prevent outbreaks and keep voters safe. We're proud and incredibly grateful to say that we know of no COVID cases or outbreaks tied to any of our VSPCs or operations. Next slide, please. Expanding voters' access to safe voting options was also the key to our strategy this election year. We now have 33 drop boxes across the county after we added seven new boxes in 2020. Some of these are the result of forming partnerships with Denver and Adams County. Next slide, please. Another expansion this year was the amount of time and the large number of locations voters had available to vote in person. Eleven of our centers opened on October 19th to give voters 12 total business days and one Saturday to cast a ballot. Not only did this improve convenience for voters and provide for a strong turnout, it allowed us to manage smaller numbers of people within voting centers and maximizing social distancing and protect both voters and staff from exposure to COVID-19. Next slide, please. Another safety measure we implemented included encouraging voters to use contact-free options, such as returning your ballot by mail and using ballot drop boxes, offering PPE to staff and masks and sanitizers to voters who came in person to vote, and offering curbside pickup for voters needing a replacement ballot. A top reason voters come to VSPCs in the weeks leading up to the election day is to obtain a replacement ballot with the curbside option. Voters call our election division, order replacement, and have the ballot brought to their car outside, eliminating the need for them to come inside at all. Next slide, please. Keeping our team of more than 634 election judges safe was also a high priority this year. These individuals were, are dedicated and hardworking, and many are older adults, a high-risk group for COVID, for the COVID virus. We took several steps to make sure our judges were kept safe throughout the weeks leading to the election and throughout the county process as well, including those you see here, like screening everyone entering the elections facility, combining trainings into virtual and small in-person groups, and offering sinks and sanitizers throughout the warehouse. Next slide, please. Turnout for the last, I'm sorry. And while we can't take all of the credit for the voters' enthusiasm, we did see historic turnout for this election. It was 86.8%. Next slide, please. Turnout for the first two to the three elections this year was pretty standard for Arapahoe County. For March Presidential Primary held the first Supertuesy in Colorado, was 49% of voters returned their ballot. Then, in June, for the state primary, we saw 44% of voters participating. That is an increase of 12% from the last primary in 2018. 2018 primary only had a 32% turnout. And now on to the general election. Next slide, please. The total number of active voters in Arapahoe County, about 86% turned their mail ballot, turned in their mail ballot or voted in person in the general election, which is a close match of our expectation turnout of 85%. We processed more than 46,000 ballots more than any other Arapahoe County election in history. Next slide, please. As you can see here, our turnout numbers reflected the change, changing demographics in Arapahoe County. We now have more unaffiliated voters than voters belonging to either major political party, and they are just as engaged as the R's and D's next to their names. Next slide, please. Lastly, we see here that voting by mail is still a preferred option for the vast majority of Arapahoe County voters. Mail-in ballots for all voters has, has been available to Colorado since 2013 across the state. So we're fortunate to have voters who are already familiar with the process and trust the system. The percentage of voters who return their ballots by mail or drop-off box actually dipped a little from what we saw in the primaries this year, when it was 99% in the past. Mail-in ballot is still our voters' favorite way to vote, though. We did see, we did see more people voting in person this election than we had expected. We had anticipated 4 to 5%. But with more VSPCs and extended dates available for voters, we only received reports of one VSPC with a wait more than 30 minutes just on Election Day. Next slide, please. So this concludes the summary of the 2020 general election. I thank you all for your time, and I hope this has given you a little more insight into the work of the election, what the Elections Division does. For every election, we make sure Arapahoe County voters have the information, access, and options they need to exercise their right to vote. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Great, thanks, thanks Joan. I, no one put anything in, in the chat, but I took some notes and
Okay.
have several questions. Was amazed at the voting numbers with the, as you say, 85. It was what you thought, 85% is what you thought. You ended up at 86. That was, you know, a rise. I've been keeping track of stuff in HD 37 and Senate District 27. Quite obviously, those are races that I run in. So I'm curious as to the number of people. And this, this year in 37, we, over 40,000 votes were cast in that specific race. So when we say 86%, that means ballots that came in. But the HD race is several down from president and governor and that type of stuff. So there is some slippage from that. Ours was, the way I figured it, just short of 70%. It was 68.4% people actually voted in our race. And so that was
Yeah, and that's, that's exciting. Just to go down the ballot, a lot of people, like I was talking on another meeting that I had this morning about the fact that when we did the recount, to me, it was really, really heartbreaking, just me even being on the lower bottom ballot race myself. When we did the recount for two races this year, there was about 25,000 that didn't vote down ballot. So they only voted for president. So yeah, the number So yeah, the numbers go down. It's counted when you just vote for president, but not necessarily the lower races, just FYI, but yeah.
So yeah, we were, we were actually 10,000 more. Yeah, we, yeah, there was 50,000 that voted in this one. That was 10,000 more than the 2018 one. And then it was 7,000, it was 43,000 that voted in 16, which was the last presidential race. So they all were going up by that. One of the other things, I wanted to talk a little bit about the judges. And that was a great section on your presentation. And one of the things that always gets to me is, is people are curious about how, how something is ran, or they want to double-check and make sure that it's going the way that they think it should go. And those people right there are quite obviously the epitome of those people who then take the action. And it's become even increasingly difficult. I mean, we see that, you know, our, our judges across the country, not so much here, or maybe you can speak to that. Were there any concerns? Did any of your judges have any of the horror stories that we see in, you know, in Georgia and Nevada, where people had to be escorted back and forth to their cars, getting hate mail? We know that there were some election officials that resigned, you know, after threats. I'm assuming nothing like that happened in Arapaho County.
Well, we tried to limit the press. A lot of our judges, because they've been returned judges every single election, and we're like, where's all the media? Where's everything? We, because of COVID, and we wanted to keep our judges safe, we had them call for appointments, and they could only stay a certain amount of time.
Oh, okay.
So whether or not, you know, Denver got more of the media hype, maybe that was it. The only incident I can think of, and that's not even, maybe even a judge issue that was right, and I think actually it was just kind of the, I don't know, the voting center and maybe some sort of intimidation. There was a gentleman that has returned to our office several years in a row, but this time he was hand-carrying a gun. Came out with another person, from what I was told later, it was his son, but they came out with video cameras, and they were filming people drop their ballot in the, in the ballot box at our admin in Littleton. And we couldn't do anything. We called the police, they said they weren't electioneering because they didn't have any candidate information or anything on them. But they stood there and with a handgun, just filming people. And of course, 100 yards away, they had a lot of candidates' stuff on their truck with flags. And, but they couldn't be removed because apparently the law is, is that you can record and be on government property. I'm so glad that they weren't allowed in the building because we have sort of a policy because of, if you don't have an appointment now, you can't get into the office. So I'm glad that they didn't come in the building to our voting center, but they started to block the door in the front. And even, you could tell that some people that were coming into the voting center were a little bit alarmed. And we were trying to make sure that everyone was calm, but it did rile up our judges quite a bit.
I can only imagine. It's hard, I mean, there they are. I mean, you, I mean, when, when you saw your, you know, your conversations with them, I mean, you know, there they are, there's someone who was curious about something, and that's the kind of their civic engagement. They, they look forward to it each election season and all of that. And then to add this kind of stuff on top of it, I mean, that's why, I mean, we're, I'm constantly having this conversation about how hard it is to get quality people, you know, to run for office and to do things. We're hearing that from other parts of society. It's harder to get people to teach, it's harder to get people, you know, into law enforcement, you know, and here's something where people are giving their time and, and they feel good about it, and it's just becoming difficult. So yeah, we'll be looking at opportunities like that, you know, forthcoming, but I'm glad everybody that we got through this okay, and that worked out really well. One of the other things I wrote down now, so maybe you can, I know it was, we had a difficult time maybe from the office being able to engage with the information that, that you were putting out about where to vote and what was coming up. I see all of those great placards and look like those would be great social media posts for people to put out with those quick little messages. It's difficult when you're in, trying to run a, you know, legislative office and a campaign office on, you know, on the same thing. This upcoming, now, tell me when we have another election coming up, because we have municipal elections.
This is going I do have, actually, I do have the chart. It's on my, it's on my screen here with all the dates and everything of when things open for, but it's next November.
Okay. So there's other, I mean, same thing, there's, there's primaries, so this is where, in here in Arapaho County, it's
No primaries, no primary election.
The primaries? Okay. So we've got city council and school boards, that kind of stuff, county.
Election Day is November 5th, Representative Sullivan.
Perfect, alright. So yeah, we'll try to help out a little bit more. We'll try to do a better job of letting people know and please send those, we're, we're always, you know, trying to be as vigorous as we can with our social media posts, and especially when there's colorful graphics. That's great, we love that kind of stuff, so.
I will send, I will send your, your aide the, the whole elections calendar.
Yeah, we don't want, yeah, we want to keep, we want to keep those, those 86% numbers going all the time, not just, you know, when there's big shiny objects for everybody to stare at, and you know, if you stare at the sun too long, it hurts your eyes, so don't do that. You know, that they show you.
We just want to keep people excited, and they need to be excited about local government too as well, not just president.
Okay, let's see, I think I've got a, a message that came in. Oh, okay. When will Arapaho get to vote on our own judicial district? That law has, hasn't passed to where they're breaking up Arapaho County, our judicial district. That's still, still in the works as far as that I'm going. So we still got, we're stuck with the Brockler protege for the time being until we get a chance at, at something else. But Joan, any, any final kind of comments, statements?
I just really want people to be engaged. I want, I don't want this excitement to end. We're just, of course, waiting for the vaccines, and hopefully everybody gets vaccinated and, and hopefully sometime soon we come back to normal. But I also want people to know that they can come to arapahovotes.com with any questions, call the, our elections hotline. It's 303-795-4511 with any questions. No question is dumb. And yeah, get involved, and you know, if you want changes in your neighborhood, run, run for office. That's all to say, I'm not going to stop doing what I'm doing. I think that making changes and make, have making sure that everyone has access is super important, and I'm not going to give up to make sure that everybody has a voice.
Okay, so now we're going to step away just from electioning for just a month. You want to talk about the rest of the office? Is there anything, any updates you want to give us about, you know, office, are you guys still open? Can we go register our cars? Can we buy our marriage license? Whatever other guys do?
We have been open since May, only with appointments only. Let me tell you, when the governor opened our offices for only 50, he, he did an executive order for only 50 people in a room, and that was way back in March. In our Aurora office, which is the busiest office in the entire state, had 400 tickets out, and that's not including husbands, that's not including kids. So I could see the fear in my employees' eyes that they were in a Petri, Petri dish for COVID-19. So I, from that day in March, when he did that executive order, I locked the doors. We did not open to the public just until May to make sure that my employees were safe and the public was safe. But we have been open since May, and I'm happy to, to say that we are not backlogged at all. You can make an appointment. Unfortunately, we're not taking walk-ins. We did start taking walk-ins to the beginning, and it was like probably depending on the office, between 250 a day, depending on how big the office was. But we stopped taking walk-ins. Renewals, you always have several options to, to do that online, mail it in, drop it off, just so you're not in contact with other people. So that's always an option, we're always processing those. The state is having a huge issue. They had, I don't know if anybody's aware, but the actual plates are made by the prisoners. They had a COVID-19 breakout, so some of the POD plates, which means plate on demand, kind of the specialty plate, so we are encouraging people not to, A, go online and order them because they don't know, they're in quarantine now and they're backlogged, the state is backlogged. So now we're encouraging people just to get regular plates and not do it online, just make an appointment and come in if you're just getting new plates for a new vehicle. But other than that, we are doing good in Arapaho County, and I think that there's a lot of other counties that are, are a little backlog because first, they didn't have appointments, and it took them a lot longer to open. So, but we were the first county to open for appointments, so Arapaho County can always, we're only two weeks out. And so, and is doing wonderful too. Recording's doing great. We plan on bringing passports back. We're hoping that our employees get vaccinated pretty soon. We were kind of, we, passports are a big business for us, but that is not on the table right now, so.
Gotcha, okay. Well, super, thank you so much, Joan. Thanks for that slide presentation. We're going to have it up on our Facebook page so people can take a look at it. They'll either reach out to us if they have any further questions, or I'm sure on there is all of your information. You might see some, some questions from that. So once again, hey, thanks so much for spending a little bit of time on this Saturday morning, and thanks again.
Yes, it was an honor. Thank you, Representative Sullivan. I appreciate it, I appreciate your time too.
You bet, alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, so I don't see how, I kind of gave everybody the kind of rundown of how the first couple of days of session went. We, like I say, you know, we're still, we're going to be working down at the office. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to give us a call. It's 303-866-5510. You should follow along on our Facebook page, our Twitter account. We have the, the weekly newsletter that comes out, that we try to put some information on there. So we're trying to, you know, make ourselves as available as we can to everybody to see if there are any specific questions or concerns that everybody has. I know everybody is, you know, the vaccine is, is on its way. I don't know if you're following the, the numbers kind of from the governor. I mean, we're less than, less than 5% have been, been vaccinated. We're having tremendous problems getting what was promised to us from, from Washington. I think we've got about another four or five days before we get a new team in there to start working on that a little bit better. So my, just my conversation is on that, is just to continue to do what you've been doing. Even when you get the vaccine, until we get it up to, you know, the 70, 80%, we're still going to have to wear masks, wash hands, socially distance, do all of the things that we've been doing to keep ourselves alive up to this point, and keep ourselves healthy and safe, and we need to continue to do that. And everybody's, you know, just waiting for their, their spot in line, and, you know, that's, that's what we should continue to do. So just want to thank everybody. We've got a, the next Town Hall we've got coming up is, again, the third Saturday in February, and we, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll give you a little preview. I was on a podcast, I don't know if any of you follow podcast, I haven't gotten into the podcasting stuff yet, I probably should, there's probably, there's a lot of great information out there, but I had a, a group reach out to me and was talking to them. It was a, her name is Amy Over. She is a survivor of the Columbine massacre. She was a senior at the time, so it's 21 years since then. The name of the podcast that they're putting together is called Confronting Columbine. And so they're going through, talking with people who were affected by it, how it's been since then, certainly reaching out to others who, who've been affected by other mass shootings and taken action. And, and in this case, there was actually, what they were hoping to do is get one of the, Patrick Neville to be on the broadcast with me, because we were on different sides of the aisle, have different thoughts on what should be done. And he's a graduate of Columbine, he was, I believe, a sophomore at the time, but he chose not to come on the program, which isn't real surprising to me, but we're going to have her in, talk about the, the podcast. She's also a part of a group called The Rebel Project. These are Columbine, these are graduates from Columbine High School, they're the Rebels, and they started getting themselves involved after the theater shooting because there was so much outreach of people trying to figure out how they get through this, and they, at that point, already had, you know, 13 years of experience of dealing with the aftermath of a mass shooting, and they put their expertise together and have really been a force with helping people and, you know, from all of these types of things, they've reached out, people from Parkland, March For Our Lives, all of that kind of stuff. So it should be a really interesting program. We're going to have that again, 11 o'clock on the third Saturday. I think we've already got some information on the website and on our Facebook, so you'll be able to take a look at it, share that information with your friends, put it on your, in your, in your calendars. I think I see somebody writing it on their calendar right now, which is a great thing to do. I have to write stuff down all the time, so, so it's good, good to see you writing it down on, on, on your calendar. But until then, thanks again, everybody, stay in touch. We're out there working for you. Feel free to give us a call if there's anything you think we can, we can help with, if you have any questions. Till next time, we'll see you all then. Take care, stay safe.